Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Board of Selectment meeting of March 29th, 6 o'clock here at Memorial Town Hall. I've called the meeting to order. Under announcements, we've got a few on behalf of the schools. On April 4th, Smith Academy will be conducting its 145th declamations at 7:00 PM at the Frank Cabarna Library. And I think that's the longest-running, or we claim it's the longest-running consecutive-running public speaking event at the high school level in the country. So, it's pretty awesome. And also, the dates, April 18th through the 21st, Smith Academy will be presenting the musical Shrek. And tickets are on sale at Smith Academy. So, that's on behalf of the schools. Also been asked to announce that on April 7th, Saturday, April 7th, from 12:00 to 1:00, there'll be a rabies clinic behind us at the Hatfield Firehouse. So, if you're interested, it's from 12 to 1, April 7th. Please have your dogs on leashes and your cats in carriers. And the fee is $15. And the veterinarian who will be here will be Dr. Nancy Lewis Owen. So, we just wanted to let people know that. If you need to have your dog or cat vaccinated.
Yeah, I have one announcement. Today is March 29th. It's Vietnam Veterans Day, so congratulations and thank you for your service to all Vietnam veterans. American Legion Post 344 is collecting items for our soldiers in Afghanistan. There's two drop-off sites. One will be at Chill and Grill, and the other will be at the American Legion Post when it's open. So, if you go on the town website, the Facebook page, you'll see a posting of items that they're asking for you to donate for our troops in Afghanistan. Some of those are like toothpaste and deodorant and stuff. So, hopefully, you can donate something for our troops in Afghanistan at either Chill and Grill or American Legion.
Thank you. That's a great cause, so hopefully, people will be able to partake in that. Do you have anything else? Ed, do you have anything else under announcements? Cindy, did you have anything?
Yes, actually. About two weeks ago, I attended the Franklin Transit Authority, the Olver Center and Greenfield meeting. Nothing's really changed since last year. It was the first time I'd been to the meeting. We're still in the same position we are, where they're looking at two separate bus stops on Route 5 in Hatfield going towards North Hampton. They would be, it's actually four. It's two major bus stops, but one on each side of the road. And we're still at the same point where the state has not approved the sidewalks that lead to it in one area, and there is no sidewalk in the more northern location up by Kenwood and Pantry Road. So, we're still on hold, and we're still waiting for the state results on that. And then also today, I had an emergency management meeting, regional one in Hadley. And just since we're in budget time, I just wanted to bring it up as kind of a heads-up for everyone. It was passed by the federal government in December, but in the last two weeks, Governor Baker signed a bill whereby where municipalities used to be able to opt out of the OSHA regulations for town employees and city employees. We're no longer going to be able to do that. So, anyone who's involved in any of the emergency services, police, fire, ambulance, and they're saying possibly even DPW because they do respond to emergencies with sand and other things, that they're going to have to have a yearly physical and pass fitness requirements in order to serve on these departments. Municipalities used to be able to opt out of this, and they're no longer going to be able to do that. And that'll be as of February 1st, 2019. So, that is going to be an extra expense that'll be coming our way within the next year. So, just figured to give everybody the heads-up on that with a few months' notice. And that's it.
Thank you. Marlene, did you have anything?
I do not. Thank you.
Okay. So, that wraps up the announcement section of our meeting. Next on the agenda would be anybody here for public forum?
Yeah. I've got a concern, a question.
Excuse me.
I've requested from the Emergency Management Committee to be on the agenda twice already. I check with Marlene weekly, and we still are not on the agenda. And, you know, I mean, for us not to be on the agenda after a written request, I think is pretty shoddy on you guys' part, that it doesn't get on there. We have concerns in that department. We want to share it with you and see if we can go forward as far as the Finance Committee meetings and so on, because that's where it's going to affect it. And I just want to know when we're going to get on there.
So, all I would say, Ed, is, as you know, the chairman puts the agendas together. So, Ed, you know, with the town administrators. So, when you ask to be on the...
By request, written request.
I know. But so along with that, is there some sort of information you've provided, like why you're coming forward? I mean, lots of people say, "I just want to be on the agenda." So...
We want to discuss pulling away from the Fire Department and separating the salary line with the Fire Department. We've already discussed that. And Stephen was resubmitting his budget and putting it underneath the Emergency Management line.
So, all I would say, because we usually don't go back and forth with, but I'm trying to, you know, have a conversation with you during the public forum. So, what I would say at this point, though, at this point, as of today, the Emergency Management Director is under the Fire Chief, not the emergency...
We're not talking about the Emergency Management Director.
I...
We're talking about the budget, the dollar figure in the salary line item that's underneath the Fire Department right now.
Yep.
We want it separated out, and we want to be a separate entity out away from the Fire Department like we were six years ago.
And so, again, so we can have you on the agenda to have this conversation. All I would say to that is that's up to the Fire Chief, because that department is currently under the Fire Chief.
Right.
Okay. So, that's why it hasn't been on the agenda.
We discussed that on the last meeting, and he was in agreeance that we separate it.
Well, we've gotten no sort of information from him as far as the reorganization goes.
He's only in charge of our budget, okay? He doesn't have any say over our department. You guys are the ones that control our department or our committee.
Right.
Okay? So, that goes from the director down.
Okay.
That's where it lies. So, the only thing that he does is the financial part of it. And the rest of it, the director and all of us on that committee are underneath the supervision of it or underneath the direction of the Board of Selectment.
No. The Emergency Management Director is not under the Board of Selectment.
Absolutely.
No. The appointment is by the Board of Selectmen. The Emergency Management Director reports to and works for the Fire Chief, under the current, under the current structure.
Unless it was changed, Brian, from when I was in there, it's...
I'm just telling you how it is, Ed. So, why, I have no problem having...
I don't want to...
No, right. Because it's not on tonight's agenda. Let's get it on the agenda, but I'd like the Fire Chief to be present, since it's all intertwined, as it should be for emergency services.
So, I guess the question is, when can we get on the agenda to discuss this with the Fire Chief and with you guys and to get a result?
Well, we'll check. Marlene and I will check the Fire Chief's schedule and your schedule, and then we'll have it on the agenda.
Next week?
I don't know about next week. We're in the middle of the final, in the next couple of weeks.
Well, it's important, because this is going to be a budget fight.
It's part of the budget. I understand.
And once the budget is set, it has to be separated before that. Otherwise, I do it on town meeting floor.
Well, that's totally up to you. I guess what I'm, I guess what I'm saying is, Marlene and I will work with the Fire Chief and you, and we'll get you on the agenda in the next couple of weeks. I mean, we're meeting weekly right now, so...
But it's, like I said, it's been two, over two weeks now, and we haven't heard anything. And whatever we want on the agenda before it gets too late.
Understood.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there any other public forum? All right. Approval of minutes of February 26th and March 20th? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a, I'll make a motion to approve February 26, 26, 2018 minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for, to accept the minutes of February 26th. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes for March 20th, 2018.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
No.
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Thank you.
Just a quick question. I noticed we haven't seen March, we have March 20th, but I don't think we've seen March 6th or 13th yet. Is that correct?
Okay. Those may be IIO, there were minutes. He did not attend.
Okay. Okay. I just wanted to make sure we weren't missing them.
I'll set Cindy.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay. All right. One more quick one, and then we'll get to you guys. We've got a couple of payroll and AP warrants to approve. Be sold.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve voucher 2402 and voucher 1035.
Yeah. And these are payroll and account payable warrants.
Yes.
Okay. So, the motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Thank you very much. All right. Under posted business, we received a couple of resignation, well, a resignation letter. Well, two, I think only one's...
Two, right.
Yeah. Okay. So, we received a letter of resignation from the Conservation Commission in the Hampshire Council of Governments. One of them is from Ron Sassi, who has resigned from the Conservation Commission. So, we have to actually accept that.
Correct.
So, we need a vote to accept that. There's a motion.
Yep. I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Mr. Ronald Sassi from the Conservation Commission.
I'll second that.
Okay. So, the motion's been made and seconded. So, Ron is resigning from the Conservation Committee. So, we will have to fill that, the remainder of that term.
That's an appointed position.
Right.
So, we'll post that position. Anyone who's interested, they can submit letters.
We'll post it. So, if anybody, any of the townspeople are interested in being in the Conservation Commission, you could let Lydia know or Marlene, and just, that would be for the remainder, looks like there's two years, right?
And I suggest, and I'm a letter of thank you for his 15 years of service on the Conservation Commission.
Absolutely.
Like, these two years remain.
Two years remaining. So, the term would expire in 2020 if anybody's interested. So, the motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
No.
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The other resignation is from Sean Berry, who is the elected representative to HCOG, Hampshire Council of Governments. So, effective April 1st, Sean will be resigning from HCOG as a representative of the town and will be actually, have a position on the Finance Committee after that resignation. So, rather than hold two, the two positions and time constraints, so... So, we will be having to appoint somebody to the remainder of that term as well.
Correct.
Which I think also has two years left, if I'm not mistaken. So, if there's anybody interested in being the town representative to the Hatfield Council of Governments, should let Lydia and Marlene know, please. Oh, so, I'll make a motion to accept the resignation from Sean Berry as elected representative to Hampshire Council of Governments?
I'll second it.
Okay. So, there's motions been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And if we could draft a letter for both, Ron and Sean thanking them for their service. Thanks, Marlene.
You're welcome.
Okay. Housing Authority. So, we have an appointment to make to the Housing Authority.
Right. I just want to just give you a little background of why we're here. In 2015, DHD changed the composition of, you know, the makeup of the Housing Authority. They turned it over from four elected members down to three elected members with one supposedly tenant elected member and, you know, along with the state appointee. So, five members. We did fill the state appointee a couple of months ago. I was very happy to take that position after my position was eliminated last year's town election in favor of a tenant appointee or tenant elected position. But in the wisdom of DHD, they haven't promulgated regulations on electing a tenant member. So, we're kind of hamstrung with, you know, vacancy on that position. And also, we had a recent, Bob Flaherty resigned a couple of weeks ago from his elected position. So, we're down, our last meeting, we were down to two members. And the law, 121B, says you have to have three to have a quorum. No matter if you have three members or five members or four members, the law says three. So, it's one of those exceptions to the, you know, getting a quorum among those who are serving. It doesn't work for the Housing Authority. So, we've asked, you know, Marlene and Lydia to get us on the agenda to get someone on our board. And unfortunately, we've had a young man step up and decided to run for the vacant position of Bob Flaherty. And we're asking you if you could consider him for the vacant position to serve an interim term from now till May till the election, so we can conduct some business. We can't, we couldn't even, you know, do anything the other night in regard to, you know, signing contracts and things like that. We didn't have a quorum, so...
This is Alex Malinowski, correct?
Yes. So, we're asking that you appoint Alex Malinowski to the interim position for two months.
And just a reminder, it must be a roll call vote between votes.
And also, we have two busters. Stanley Simansky is running for reelection, reelection for the full term, I believe, five-year term. And Alex will be running for the unexpired term with Mr. Flaherty.
There it is.
So, there'll be two, you know, positions on the ballot. So, if people want to come forward and do write-ins, they can do that. But we were happy we got somebody to run.
Yeah.
So, this is just so we'd be able to conduct business for the next two months.
Sure. Makes sense. Well, thank you, Alex. We'll just make it official. So, I'll make a motion to appoint Alex Malinowski to the Hatfield Housing Authority. Is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
Okay. So, we need to take a roll call vote. So, Jaworski?
Aye.
Moriarty? Aye. Doty?
Aye.
Okay. And I think you guys really should do the...
Stanley Simansky? Aye. Well, it's aye.
All right. So, it's unanimous. So, Alex, congratulations. And thank you for...
And thank you for having me trust in me, and I will do my best to improve as much as I can.
That's awesome, no doubt. And it's got to be great having a younger, a younger, a little younger than you guys.
And he doesn't know he's going to hit...
And Alex, thank you for stepping in.
Thank you.
Oh, I think it's great.
He's going to be hitting the ground running in the next week, because DHD requires new board members to take an orientation online. It's five hours long, and it tells you the nuts and bolts of the operation of the Authority from how you start, why you're there, what your responsibilities are. It touches on the ethics law. It touches on, you know, Chapter 30, you know, being the procurement law.
Right.
So, he'll get a good, you know, primer for that, you know, by his first meeting, which is in two weeks.
But just remember, I was going to say, just remember, don't let that get you down after five hours of that.
I thought he was running against Buster.
But also, also, I understand. We'll check with Louise. He'll have to take the ethics...
The ethics online.
Lydia. I don't think it's Louise. Louise retired.
Did I say Lydia?
It's Louise. That's okay.
But we all know, we all know who you meant. But also, all kidding aside, and get sworn in before your first meeting.
Right, right.
Just to make it official, so...
Monday.
Yep.
Day.
Yep. Great.
Thank you, guys.
No, thank you, Alex. Thank you. Appreciate it.
And Monday, I believe Lydia leaves, leaves on vacation the 3rd.
After, yeah. She leaves 3rd.
The 2nd, yeah.
That's good.
Okay. Great. Yep. Thank you.
Thanks for getting us on.
Of course. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Happy Easter, you guys.
Yep.
Thank you.
Alex?
Yep.
Congratulations. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Yeah, no, thank you. Thank you.
Alex, welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Billy. We also have an appointment to make for the Emergency Management Director position, which would expire, given the appointments we made two meetings ago, I think, that Lydia brought in an entire list of appointments that expire on April 1st. So, my hope is that we know that there's a change, we know there's a reorganization request coming forward, or we understand that anyways. But I didn't want the position to lapse in the meantime until that reorg comes through, which wouldn't take effect until July 1st. So, I didn't want the town to be without an Emergency Management Director till it, you know, till we find out exactly what the plan is moving forward.
So, I mean, so the object is to appoint to July 1st for now, and so we can have discussion on the reorganization, correct?
That's, that's how I'm looking at this, yeah. Because otherwise, if we don't take a positive action, you know, according to the appointments, then it would end on Sunday. So, we don't want that to happen. And then, as the reorganization comes through, whatever that is, whichever way it goes, the appointment obviously can be extended or, you know, however it all plays out, so...
So, this would be, you'd be looking for a motion to reappoint the Emergency Management Director to July 1st to fill the void, so we can have discussion on the reorganization.
Correct.
Okay. So, if that's the case...
That's all it is.
Then I will make a motion to reappoint Emergency Management Director to July 1st to make sure that we have an Emergency Management Director, which will give us time to have discussion on the reorganization.
Great. I, yep.
Okay.
So, that's...
So, that's...
So, the motion's been made. I'm going to second it.
Okay.
Is there any further discussion?
No.
Okay.
Brian, I hope that we're included in that, because I'll be really ripped if we're not.
We are part of the town.
Including what?
The whole thing, so...
Yeah. Of course.
Well, it's, until now, it doesn't show, okay?
Well...
And it seems like you're trying to do something behind our backs.
That is absolutely not true. That is, that is absolutely not true. I actually, I actually made this motion two weeks ago, but it, trust, trust me, Ed. I wouldn't do something like that. But we're not going to, we're not going to do something that, knowing some, another plan is coming forward. That's, that's what all this is about. Just to make sure we have the coverage, that people are in the same place that they're in now. That's, that's the goal. You will be, your, the Emergency Management Committee, of which you're part, will be part of the process. Okay? I can assure, I can assure you of that, regardless of what you've heard or feel or think.
I haven't heard anything.
Okay.
That's why I'm concerned down here, okay? Because it just, you know, up till now, it doesn't look good for us, okay? And we have to work together as a team. We've got a great team, like I said, over the years.
I don't dispute, I don't dispute it. I don't disagree. And keep in mind that any of these things, whatever changes may or may not happen, are effective July 1st. You know, it's March 29th, so...
Well, it's critical that the money gets transferred from the Fire Department over to that line item at the Emergency Management.
I'm waiting for the, I'm waiting for the proposal from the Fire...
That's the critical part.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay.
Yep. I'm on it. I'm with you. Okay. Chris, did you want to say something?
So, right now, who is, who is that in that position right now?
Cindy. And Cindy will remain in that position. But because, because Cindy's in that position and a select board, you know, it's that fine line thing, yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry. I assumed everybody knew that it was Cindy, but that's okay. Nope. Did we, so motion's been made and seconded. Can't remember if we voted. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you. Town Administrator Report. We're just going to start going over, I guess, some of the articles.
Mm-hmm. So, what you have in front of you is the draft today. Actually, this is the same draft we received last week.
Same as last week, right?
Although I, there may be additional articles. Capital Planning, just a side note, nothing officially yet from Capital Planning, but they are, they met today, and they may be, you know, submitting recommendations for, for the warrant. And of course, that would be, the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee will review those recommendations, not necessarily for this warrant, but that all depends on, you know, the discussion and what comes forward.
Okay.
And Capital Planning is under the opinion that they'll be talking to both the board and the Finance Committee on their recommendation. So, they want to, down the road before April 24th, they seem, they will need to meet with the Finance Board and the Board of Selectmen to present their stuff.
Right. And then they actually, around that timeframe, have to actually bring a formal, a formal recommendation. Besides the conversations over the next few weeks, there's a formal presentation made to the Board of Selectmen from Capital Planning.
Yeah. Just like to add that regarding the Community Preservation Budget Article, I received updated information from the chairman the other day, so I have not included those changes in this version.
Well, yeah. I mean, this is, some of the draft articles we have in front of the board are similar every year. And then others are, will be new, and then others are the same every year, but the amounts, perhaps, of, the amount of monies that are referenced in their change. So, you know, this is our first kind of crack at it. We know we're going to be getting some zoning bylaws, most likely, after the Planning Board meets about cannabis and do's and don'ts and things like that.
There is a draft article in there to...
Yeah, we have the draft article, but they still have another meeting, I think, next week.
Next week.
Which the public should come to, if interested.
Brian, are our two articles on there for the 350th anniversary? One is for, to set up a revolving account, anniversary revolving account, and the other one's for $25,000 town share.
one's for $25,000 town share.
I, we know, Ed, I don't know if we added them, this, so this is a, a week old, I mean, we know, we, well, it's gonna be in our, I don't know if it's in this packet we have right now, but we're just...
There is, there is, there is an article, I spoke to you yesterday, there is an article...
Page nine at the bottom is one, right.
Oh, right.
As for the revolving fund, I'm just, you know, I had said to you yesterday that Derek was working with, with you on the revolving...
Usually, the placeholder in there, four years old.
Yeah, yeah, there's, yep. There is for the 350th steering committee.
Maybe two for 350.
The one for the $25,000 is on there, right.
What's the other one?
And the other one is...
The other one is to set up a, anniversary revolving...
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah.
Right. And there is...
Where that, we don't, it's not...
There is something tentatively as a placeholder, but actually, that's gonna have to come out, because it's not going to be a revolving fund under chapter 44, 53E and a half, so that will come out. So, we are, I'm aware of it, we were...
Yeah, Cindy, Cindy.
It will get taken care of, Ed. It will get taken care of.
They're both on here, Ed.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yep. So, so Marlene, or Ed and Cindy, what was your thought to go through these at this point?
I'd be glad to speak to, just go through it, a brief overview.
Right, did anybody have something in particular?
If you have any questions as we go through, and then any, any other articles for, to add. So, the first article, one is the election for May, May 15.
Yes, right.
And I have prepared a ballot question. I had hoped to have clarification today from Department of Revenue regarding whether we can split that out into two separate ballot questions, and I didn't get a response back. Yesterday, I had received an email that they would, you know, get that information to me yesterday, but I followed up this morning and...
Okay, well, we'll get it.
I expect, you know, I know they're very busy, because they have somebody, somebody at DOR had to take a leave of absence, and I know they're trying to cover that person.
So, the, just for people, I think we went over this a little bit last time, but that, that particular question has to do with having the town treasurer and collector become an appointed position for the town of Hatfield, rather than an elected position.
Right.
It also looks to combine the two positions.
Correct.
Versus having two separate positions, as it is now.
Right.
Okay. Well, as Marlene alluded to, we're waiting for some clarification on the language, and we'll, you know, straighten that out.
Right.
Okay, Article 2.
Article 2, actually, this was on the warrant last year. We were not in a position to reimburse community preservations, was due to an accounting error a few years ago.
Yep.
So, we may have to table that article.
Okay.
But it's, it's there, just as a reminder, and I can, I can pull it.
Sure. That has to do with a sum of money that came out of the CPA, but was used under general funds, basically.
Correct.
Basically.
Correct.
CPA, rightfully so, was looking to get reimbursed, the money that should be in their, their checking account, not the town's, okay?
Right. Article 3 is the standard...
Gifts, yeah.
To accept, right, expend without, without appropriation, the state or federal grants. Article 4 is to authorize the treasurer to enter into a compensating balance for fiscal year 2019, and that's a standard article.
Correct.
Article 5 as well, that's to appropriate the chapter 90...
Yep.
Money from the state, and that's for $242,524. The following article, and I stopped numbering them after Article 5, because the board, and I, I think once we, we settle on the articles, then we'll, we'll number them.
Yeah, well, sometimes it makes sense, certain ones make sense to have them in a certain order.
So, as well as having the ballot question...
Yes, as well.
For the combined elected positions of town treasurer and collector, that's an article to vote on that.
Right, so, correct, so, the, to make the treasurer, collector, one position, and to make it an appointed position, is both a town meeting vote and the ballot box vote, so it needs both of those to pass.
Right.
In order to become effective.
Right. The next three articles are prior...
Cleanups.
Year cleanups.
Nothing major, thank goodness.
So, nothing.
1100, 786.
Correct.
Okay. So, a total of, total of under $2,000. You're welcome, Chris. Okay. Now, we have some general bylaw...
General bylaw changes.
By, by, I'm sorry, Marlene, excuse me. So, at this point, there could be other articles that come forward, any, so when do citizen petitions have to be in, if there are any, do you know? Is that still, that's gotta be coming up pretty soon, right? Couple weeks?
Any, well, the deadline for the warrant articles has passed, but obviously, I'll still accept them. I think by law, if the town court receives a citizen's petition, it has to be put on. The last, at the latest, the board of selectmen needs to sign the warrant, April 25th.
Okay, all right.
Okay, now, there was a request from Straits Road to have water extension, so, does that, how does that work with the request from Straits Road?
That, that should come from the DPW director. It may have been submitted on his capital plan?
I was just gonna say, it's probably a capital law.
Yeah, I would expect it's a capital.
It's on the capital plan, so, I just, I just wanna make sure that at, at least the town have a opportunity to vote for it, that's all.
So, you recommend, well, is capital planning recommending that article?
Well, capital planning was discussing bringing it forward for the town to determine if they were going to support it.
Okay.
So, I'm just...
That's where it would come from.
That's where, right.
Another article that will need to go on there.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Good, glad to know that.
Yeah, Ed.
Quick question, just out of interest here. If you do away with the treasurer and collector's position...
Yep.
Okay, I believe it's gotta go on the town meeting article and voted at the voting box.
Correct, yep, yep.
Okay, just wanna make sure.
Gotta be both, yeah.
Change in the, change in the...
Yeah, you're right, yeah.
So, this, this, a general bylaw change is actually required by DOR regulations. You know, every year, we have that standard article, chapter 44, 53 and a half, we have to vote that every year.
Excuse me, right.
Towns are now required to develop a bylaw, and so I have drafted that bylaw. You'll still have to vote annually the, the budget for it, as we do, but we have to add it, amend our bylaws, and insert the revolving fund language.
Okay. Yep, thank you.
Welcome.
More bylaws. Okay.
Yeah, that continues on to the next page, and as you see, I have the 350th anniversary, but we'll be striking that, because it's going to be a different statute.
Okay. But it will, it'll be on there somewhere.
Correct. Correct. So, it's in the article to authorize a donations revolving fund for the committee.
Yep.
Then we have the zoning, proposed zoning bylaw articles.
Yep.
And, actually, what I don't have is, there is a chart that will be inserted with this article.
Yep.
Says, insert table, I have a note to myself to do that.
Right.
So, again, yeah, planning board is meeting next week on April 4th. We have a hearing on the proposed marijuana bylaw.
Yeah, they, they put in a lot of work and effort, and, you know, unfortunately, the, the state rules and regulations over the last couple of years seem to be in flux, and so it's, it's been hard for communities to really know exactly what the state's plan is, although I think the state's finally getting it together now, so, in speaking with Bob Wagner, I know he's done an awful lot of research...
He has.
On behalf of the planning board and for the town, so, there's already been, all we, excuse me, have already had public hearings, and they're gonna have another one next week, so, all the different facets of the potential marijuana establishments, you know, whether it's into cultivating, and manufacturing, and retail, and all those things are gonna be discussed, so if anybody's interested, it'd be a good, I don't know what night and time, it's on our website.
It's Wednesday, the 4th, maybe at 6 o'clock, but I'm not sure.
Next, so Wednesday the 4th?
Wednesday the 4th.
Okay, so, and we can get the, verify it, you know, what time it is at, John, by any chance?
Six or 6:30.
Okay. But it is the 4th?
Will you be taping that, John? Oh, good, so it'll be on television as well, then.
Okay, so, actually, that, that one article, as it stands now, which kind of encompasses everything, is about three pages, three full pages long, so, more to follow on that. Okay. Then there's some community preservation articles?
Yes. The first one is their budget...
Yes.
Followed by projects that the community preservation committee is supporting.
Yep.
The first one is to, to contribute $96,400, well, actually, I'm not gonna get into the numbers, because I did receive updated numbers.
Right.
But this is for, to create, create an athletic field at Smith Academy. The next project is to create a community gardens on Billings Way.
Yep.
And that committee has been meeting on a regular basis, and I understand that they have quite a few people that have expressed interest in utilizing the space.
Yeah, they're doing a great job letting the townspeople know all about it, they're, they're doing a great job, so, looking forward to seeing that. Okay?
The next item is for restoration and rehabilitation in a removal and control of invasive species on town-owned and controlled parcels.
Okay.
And the next article is from open space committee, and this is sort of a follow-up to an article that was voted on last year at town meeting. This is part of the, this is for the recreational trails. As you know, they were promoting a recreational trail up on Horse Mountain.
Right.
And this would be a grant, but again, it's a reimbursable grant.
Isn't this, is this the one that Mark and Peter had come in back...
Yes.
A few weeks, or months ago now, maybe, but, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
And that's for $32,094.
But it's reimbursable.
It is.
Awesome. Okay, thank you.
And the next article is, I had just referred to this, this is the revolving, standard revolving fund articles that we vote annually.
Yep.
And the DP, for the DPW motor grader and the hazardous materials. The next article is to raise and appropriate a sum of $25,000 for the purpose of implementation of the town's 350th anniversary in 2020.
Okay.
Next article, and you will continue to see this annually, something we should've had on the, on the warrant, and that's at the end of the year, to move money from fiscal year, transfer monies from fiscal year 2018, ambulance revenues, to ambulance surplus.
Right. Okay.
The next article is the operating budget, the fiscal year 2019 operating budget. Followed by the article here.
The last one will be the big, the big packet of information, right?
The budget article? I've had a few people ask why we don't take that up sooner.
I think part of it has to do with the other articles that have to do with finances, depending on how they play out, could change what the budget is, so, that's...
Could have an impact on...
Pretty much why, right.
Right.
Up or down, quite frankly.
That's true.
So, that's the reason why, the, the good news is, at this point, if, is there don't see, there doesn't seem to be very many articles, so...
Not at this...
I mean, in the big scope of things, I mean...
Well, we don't have the capital articles on there, and...
Right.
I, I, after, you know, the revised financial policies that the board of selectmen received from DOR...
Yes.
They recommended some changes to our town bylaws, and the intent is to amend the town bylaws and update the existing articles that we have there. I felt, and if the board of selectmen, you know, feels differently, I'm glad to discuss that, the board of selectmen has not voted to adopt those financial policies, so I, I felt that until we get through that, then if we even have a special town meeting, but it's, I think it's actually more appropriate to amend the town bylaws at an annual town meeting, but I think our intent is, is to do that, and just wasn't sure if we would be prepared to do that for this annual town meeting.
Right, and I would agree with you that that is our intent, to, to update and change those particular bylaws as recommended by the Department of Revenue and the state, if, if we've gotten through the, because there's lots of them, I mean, here's, you know, here's the book, right?
The beginning of it, they, yes.
You gotta go through this page by page and see what changes they, they want, so whether we can have that done by the end of next month, in order to have it on this annual town meeting, which doesn't mean that some of the recommendations, while approved here, by here, I mean, by the board, couldn't be, you know, we could follow those procedures...
Sure.
As long as they're not a major change from, I mean, most of them are just gonna be cleaning up the language.
Yes.
That's, that's what the majority of them...
Basically what it is.
So, it doesn't change the intent, it doesn't change what it's really all about. No, Ed, we don't have that yet, or we haven't gotten that. This is a Division of Local Service financial policy manual for the town of Hatfield. So, we can just see where we, where we are with, with that.
Sure. Cindy?
No, does he mention the forensic report? Will we, will we be meeting on that soon?
Just when, we need to make that an agenda item, and the auditor would like to come in and sit down with the board of selectmen to review that, so I just need to get back to him when that will be an agenda item.
Okay, that sounds good. Sooner the better, yeah.
Are there any other questions on, or, Marlene, did you have any other comments you wanted to make regarding the 2018 town meeting warrant?
Not at this time.
So, I had something that I wanted to float by my colleagues, and, and the town as a whole, and that would be, should the Hatfield Board of Selectmen move from three members to five? And I thought about that, actually, since I was first on this board four years ago, what I thought, what I thought, the advantages of a five-member committee versus a three-member committee are, and, and there's many, I think a five-member board would allow for more dialogue on issues, I think it would allow two members to have a conversation about any particular item on the agenda, or any sort of concern in town in general, without fear of violating, or being in appearance of violating the open meeting law. You know, when you have a three-member board, anytime two of us are having a conversation about anything, it can be perceived as violating the open meeting law. It would also, I think it would also help in the, the chances of if, if someone were ill, if somebody's on vacation, any of those types of things, I think by still having four members rather than two, that's advantageous. We are asked to be on numerous committees throughout the area, not just within the town, but, you know, Cindy mentioned Franklin Regional, and there's the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, and a host of others, and I think if some of that could be spread out amongst other members, that would be a benefit to the town. And I think the biggest thing is, you know, I look at all the other committees in town who are the majority, and you have the planning board, five members, you have the rec committee, five members, you have the housing authority, as they just discussed, five members, and you have the school committee, of which I've been on for almost 20 years, with five members, and I think the advantage, another advantage of a five-member committee is it allows two members, whoever, you know, different combinations of two members, to make up a subcommittee, or a task force, or whatever you wanna call it. And while those meetings that those two members have would be posted, if it's on behalf of doing town business, those two members could do the research of a particular topic, you know, whatever, and be able to bring it back to the full board, having done the research and the background and the backup information. So, it has certainly served the school committee well, because we've got task force for budget, for policy, I don't know, there's, there's probably a dozen that are made up of two members of the school committee, who then come back and report to the school committee as a whole. So, that's my spiel. I, I'm not looking, so my goal would be, if this were a article, is to ask the town's interest in doing it, not necessarily an article that says we're doing it, it's an article to say, should the board of selectmen have a, have a, have a steering committee, an ad hoc committee, you know, whatever, to research going this, this way, and to see what the majority of townspeople feel, should it be five or three. But it wouldn't be a vote like last year, which was to actually make the change. My article would be more, is there an interest in the town moving to this, to this form of government, so...
It has come up, and the town has rejected it, but that doesn't mean things don't change. It's a vote, you know, and it has in the past, and arguments on both sides.
Yeah, always, yeah.
And you gave some of the pros, some of the cons, where, would we get enough people to vote, or, excuse me, to run for the office that were legitimately interested, or whatever, because, well, sometime, well, actually, your last one, you ran unopposed, you didn't, there weren't a lot of people out there interested, but, as I said, it has been rejected by the town in the past, things change, it's up to the townspeople.
Brian, just a comment.
Sure.
As a past selectman, for years, we've had three-member board, as you know, we've tried to do that, but to change it to a five at one point in time, but it's hard enough to get through the meeting with three people, if you have five, it's so hard, I mean, you ask people in Hadley, Amherst, the five-member boards, it's a nightmare to get things done, because everybody's got too much deliberation, too, too many, too much involved with five members, so it's easier to run business with three members, like it's done for the last 350 years. The other thing is, the, on your comment about the two people can talk to one another, it becomes pulling the board, as you know, and that's illegal, you can't do that with the open meeting laws, so, especially if you're, you talk to one another, and then that one talks to the other one, that, that becomes pulling the board, which is illegal. So, you have to be really careful with that kinda stuff with a five-member board, the last thing you wanna do is get sued, so...
Well, and I don't disagree with that, Ed, and I'm familiar with, with that term, but conversely, I would say, but now you can have two members speak, and you're not invite, in clear violation of the open meeting law, whereas with five, you know, as, as a three-member board, so...
If it stays with the two members, that's fine, but if...
Correct.
If the one member goes to the third member, and then that, that's pulling the board.
Right.
And that becomes illegal.
Right, so, let me just tell you, not you, per se, but the people, the biggest advantage I, personally, I see to this, so, again, to what you mentioned about, you know, too many people might make, you know, muddy the waters as far as meetings go, you know, the way I see the concept working, which is just how the schools do it, is you have, we call them task force, but it's a subcommittee, and it's made up of two people, you know, so the charges for those two people, whatever committee it is, you know, for example, if it was two, two out of five of us going over the financial policy, they would kinda do the research, work with Marlene, or the DOR, or whatever, and then come back to the rest of the board with the proposal. Right now, you've got three different people having to, to do that. It actually would make things, I think, run smoother and better, and be, because it would be more organized, that all the information has already been found and disseminated amongst the five members.
And with no reason, you can't have a board subcommittee. You guys up there can have a subcommittee, two, three-member board, three-member committee that will overview whatever, look over whatever you want.
Not, not with two, not with two of us on it, we can't, not with only three members on the board.
You can, you can, you can appoint a committee to go over this stuff here and report back to you.
Yeah, but they would, but they're not board of selectmen members, they're... no. What I'm saying is if, it would be about keeping the Board of Selectmen would do their own research via their subcommittees, and then that's how they would make their decision. But, so.
But then there's five opinions instead of three, which makes it worse.
I mean, what you're asking is just to ask the town's opinion. Not that I'm convinced that five is better. If you can't get three to agree, never mind five. And whether or not this town's ready for that, I don't know. But if you're, if you're just requesting just to ask the town what their thoughts are, well, I may entertain that. Not that I am in favor of five.
To answer your, if that's a question to me, then yes. The article would read something like, should the Board of Selectmen, or the Town of Hatfield, or what have you, investigate moving to a five-member board, and what would that, you know, what, what would it take to get there, type thing?
Well, if it's just to find out what people's opinions are.
Well, I don't think we want to spend time doing it in advance, and then finding out at a town meeting, they say, forget it. I mean, if town meeting says, forget it, that's cool. If they say, yeah, find out more information and bring it back to us, that's cool, too. I mean, think about it. Think about it. Why does every other committee have five members, except for the Board of Selectmen?
To make the quorum.
Right.
That's what they have five members for, because.
And to make more, and to do research, and to do research, two of them can do research.
Well, I'd rather see everybody on the board, three or five, read through everything.
Right.
You know, not just a subcommittee read through.
No, it's not, it's not to take over from doing that.
All five, or all three, or all seven, or whatever it is, everyone should read through it.
Right.
Then you, you'll probably need another assistant from Marlene, because now you've got five people coming to her, instead of three. You know what I'm saying? It's, but anyways.
It's, you know, it's been brought up. It's, I've had a couple of different people ask me over the last couple of years. Plus, I think it's a good idea myself. But it's just, it's just to see how the town feels about it.
It's for an opinion, okay.
And it would be, I'm guessing, should it move forward eventually, it would be two members one year, two members another year, and then a single member on a, on a third year, as far as an election cycle goes.
So are you looking like on the ballot, as like a non-binding?
No, 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 just a town meeting. I was just gonna get a, I mean, I wasn't. I was just thinking, a town meeting, see what people say.
It's a question. On the ballot, it's a question, that's all. I mean, if you want to see what the town feels like, fine. I know it's been voted down over and over again, but.
So hasn't the combination of the town treasurer and collector, but I think there's a new feeling for that now. So, things change, right?
Things change.
Leave it up to the townspeople. That's why we're here.
Can ask. I guess if you want to ask, go ahead.
Okay.
That's fine.
All right. Was there anything else on town meeting articles? Cindy?
No.
Ed, did you have anything else on town meeting articles?
No, the only thing, we're trying to get the Capital Planning Committee to get together and move that along.
Bring something forward, yeah, okay. Great, thank you. All right, and then we're just reviewing some human, excuse me, human resource policies. Some of these topics were from last week, but we sort of ran out of time as we were getting into.
Yes.
Beginning the budget process.
Section eight. And I think we had.
We hit the beginning of that.
We, yes, we did.
We had just hit, we had just got into the queries section.
Eight point five, yes.
Yep. Cindy, it was number five last week. Did that help?
Maybe.
I know, I had all mine, too.
Here, Cindy, would you like to take a look at this?
So, the section we were going over, was the hiring procedure, and basically, we were just, again, you know, you need to go through the policies and take recommendations from the state and town council, different things, just to keep them current, basically. So, that's all we're really doing. None of this is changing the entire concept of what the existing procedure is. It's just tidying it up and changing the language as recommended. So I think we had, I think we had completed what I would call Page One. And then there's just a.
Could I just ask a question on Page One? Eight point one advertised. Where you have it underlined, if a vacancy occurs or a new position, that underlined section? Right. Is that something new? No, that, and we discussed that last week. And I had just, the reason I had underlined that is because it sort of conflicted with the roles and responsibilities of the town administrator, but we cleared that up. Okay. Yep. Right, so the town administrator's role and responsibilities will change. Rather than oversees and handles. Right. Town departments, it will.
I think we changed it to assists with, or.
Right. Responsible for ensuring, my notes say responsible for ensuring following the process. Yes. Yes, that sounds familiar.
Yeah.
Okay.
It was about helping the department heads with the advertising, or what have you, because they would ultimately make the hire for their particular department. That's,
Right.
And then Betsy had a great.
Right.
Clarification, or a great sentence as to how to kind of clean it up a little bit.
Comply with the process for both of them. Right.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Okay. On the next page, really, was, talks about queries, which is the criminal offender record information, and which we've had quite a bit of information regarding. It looks like we're just adding some Department of Criminal Justice information in there to maybe give a little more teeth in exactly what needs to be done, and what the roles and responsibilities, and who's in charge of handling the queries.
Those recommended changes are pursuant to the query, criminal offender information.
Okay. Was there, was there any questions on that?
No, the only question I think we had was Page One, and the wording, and that got cleared up, so I, I'm good with that whole thing.
Yeah, it really isn't anymore, yeah. Cindy, did you have any other questions?
Don't, no more yellow marks.
Pardon?
Nope, no more yellow marks. I'm good.
Okay. So, we've been accepting these section by section, right, Marlene?
Yeah.
So, I'll make a motion to accept the changes to the hiring procedure, and the modifications as presented.
Second.
So the motion's been made and seconded, to accept the changes and the modifications to those changes that we did last week. Is there any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thanks, Marlene. I know that's a lot of work. All right. Review the financial policies. This is also, as I alluded to earlier, so the Financial Policy Manual for the Town of Hatfield, we've been doing to that the same thing we've been doing to the HR policy, which is going section by section, and updating existing verbiage, or changing if necessary.
Plus, we've also had the.
For the DOR.
Financial Committee review those.
Yes, correct, yep.
And we wanted, we wanted their input on those to, before we made any changes.
Right. But we can review, you know, we can still review them as we've been going section by section. So we can make those changes and recommendations. Do you have that?
So the next, we were going to review Financial Management Operations, which is quite lengthy.
Okay.
So might want to just take a few of those tonight, and then maybe split, you know, split it up and.
Right, okay. We were also, so these changes have come about for numerous reasons, but Department of Local Services, DOR, our town auditor, our internal folks, you know, we're just trying to put it, put pen to paper on how we want to move forward with certain policies that we have.
Right. Financial Management Operations start on Page 22.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, I didn't bring that one. I just said the information from last week. I didn't have the book in that one.
So.
Oh, was that copied, was that copied in your packet last week? I don't see it there. Oh, okay. Unless it's, did you have it in yours?
I didn't notice, because I had the book with me, so.
No, I don't believe it was.
Our packets are getting bigger and bigger.
For number six, right? Yes. I don't see a six. I'm sorry, for Topic Five. Last week, it was Topic, it's the same thing. It was Topic Six last week, correct. Right. Cause five, and I don't think there is a six.
Well, we can just, do you have yours, Ed?
Let me see if I have it.
It starts with the ambulance receivables, right, Marlene?
Yes. There is no six. Okay. Well, I'll be glad to go make a copy for you, or if you'd like to, we can share this.
Well, all right, you want to go that way, and I'll go this way?
Yeah.
All right. So the ambulance receivables, under the financial policies, it talks about charges and billing, that really that would come from, I mean, I think we're following that, the, I don't think there's been any change.
Need to be cleaned up a little bit?
Yeah.
Yes, it did.
Okay. So do we have the changes in?
Actually, that's all been, yes, it's been resolved.
Resolved, that's what I thought, okay.
The fire chief and the town accountant, yes.
Okay. All right, then we get into.
Collections are working very well.
Yeah.
No, I did talk to the fire chief. He was happy with the way this was written.
The process, yeah.
Because he was actually part of this process.
Yes, he was.
I asked if he had any questions, and he was good with it.
Yeah, yeah. They're doing a lot, they're doing a good job, and they're, they're collecting their revenue.
If you want to accept that section right there, that's the ambulance section, that's fine.
You want to do it that way? I mean, I'm fine with that.
I'm sorry.
So would you like us to say, make a motion to accept the, for example, the ambulance receivables, or how do you want?
You could do that.
Or would you rather get through a whole section?
I think we talked about going through the entire policies, and then voting at the end. If there were any questions that came up, then I would follow up, do the research.
Yep. So we'll just make a note that ambulance receivables is okay.
Okay.
All right. Then we had anti-fraud.
Right.
Which is about the town's asset and reputation, and misappropriation, abuse of funds, so.
Yes, that was necessary.
Right. And so when we say necessary, so, but there's no changes to the language that's our, to this.
We didn't have, we didn't.
We didn't need to change it, okay. Credit card usage. I think we've got our policy and procedure in place for that, right?
Is it anti-fraud?
Thank you.
Credit card. And currently, so if the town should have a credit card, currently, we do not have a credit card.
Right.
But if we do, this is the policy that DOR has recommended we follow.
Right. Okay. So we don't even have one for emergency purposes, like we used to?
I don't believe we do, no.
Okay. Disbursements, to mitigate the risk and fraud, that the town disperses cash only for valid legal liabilities. Again, this is the recommendation of the Department of Revenue, and it shows department, so within this book that we're looking at for the townspeople, it explains the responsibilities. And then under responsibilities, it drills down further to talk about department heads, the treasurer, the town accountant, Board of Selectmen, prior fiscal bills, emergency disbursement. So it really spells out exactly how you're supposed to handle all of those different.
Right, it breaks it down.
Who's responsible for what.
The head, the treasurer, yes.
Yeah, the book is great.
Very good.
Yeah, they did a really nice job for it. Okay. So Cindy, or Marlene, or Ed, any questions on the disbursement part of it?
I do not have any questions. No, I read through it earlier. Much earlier.
Financial management team, talks about who makes up the team. The purpose is to be as effective as possible of the financial practices of the town, and promote the optimal coordination between the departments, so. We're getting there. And who this applies to, town administrator, accountant, treasurer, collector, assessors, school department, so. Excuse me, and it includes a policy for the financial team, so. Any questions on that one, or changes, I should say?
I don't have any questions. No, when we first got the book, I went through the whole thing, so it's been a while, so I'm just kind of reviewing, you know.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm just kind of reading it over again, as we see it.
We can, I mean, we can do more at a later date, if you'd rather wait till you had the, you probably made notes in your.
I did notes, no.
So if you'd rather wait, I mean.
Yeah, I'm wondering if, rather than go through this, and then go through it, maybe just, we can.
I mean, some of the sections in there, I don't know, some of our other departments should at least look at specific section, when it comes to the treasures, whether the treasurer's office should be taking a look at that section.
This was forwarded to all the departments to review.
So all departments do have it, okay.
They have received it. They received it when I received it.
Okay. Have you gotten any input from any of the departments on any of those sections?
Initially, I received a response from the fire chief, and, you know, he had some concerns, and we met and discussed them, and he's perfectly comfortable with them.
So so far, all the other.
He understands now the reasons why these are in place.
Yeah. So all the other departments right now have not provided any additional.
I have not received input from anybody else. The treasurer, and accountant, and myself have sat down and looked at these. I know that Derek was reviewing them, and going to submit any, you know, submit comments if he had any. But I know initially, when we had a discussion, we were very comfortable with what DOR had provided, what they, they expanded upon what we already had in place, and then added, you know.
Right.
Several new policies.
Because one discussion in here is for under capital planning, they, this book indicates 25,000 for capital.
Right.
Where some people feel that's too high.
If you recall, that did come up for discussion at a meeting several weeks ago, and I had sent an email to DOR, and I received a response back and forwarded it to you. So it really can be whatever the town would like. I don't have her email in front of me, but essentially, they felt that 25,000 was more of a significant number. You used to have it at 10, I believe, it was 10,000, and now you're at 25, and maybe that's good for a larger town.
Bigger community.
But, who else, I don't think so.
No.
So it's entirely, you know, a decision of the Board of Selectmen. If we were to change it, we'd amend the town bylaws. But I believe, under capital planning, in the front of this book, there are recommendations to amend the bylaws, and capital planning is one of them, but not as a result of the threshold, in other language.
No, I mean, it's important that other eyes are on here, and you've already done that, and other departments have given input to this, because, because once we, at the end say, that's it, then they're going to be bound by.
Sure.
By this. Okay, all right.
I just wanted, like, when you mentioned emergency management, I was gonna say, I didn't see any of that. I don't know if that pertains to us or not. Any part of that?
No, it didn't. I think I talked about ambulance revenues, Ed.
Ambulance, yes. That's under.
I just said, the comment I did make was emergency disbursements, you know, like if you have to make something to a vendor. No? No, I didn't, all right.
I need to copy that.
Grant, yeah, well, I'm assuming we have copies of this somewhere.
I have it electronically. I can send it to you.
Great, thank you.
Grant management is the next heading, which basically is to ensure Hatfield efficiently and appropriately manages its grant-funded programs. I mean, it's pretty much, let me just put an okay on here. Cindy, did you have a comment or anything on that one?
No.
Marlene?
No, I do not.
All right. Procurement, conflict of interest, integrity of procurement and contract process, educate town employees, Uniform Procurement Act. Now, you're down, you know, here it does talk about $10,000, about written quotes. It doesn't say that that's a capital thing, but, so.
Procurement, that's, yeah, Chapter 30B.
Right. Bid evaluation, confidentiality, conflict of interest, state ethics, I mean, kind of a. I mean, kind of a common...
No.
Normal stuff, so. How far do you want to go? Because the whole book is...
This section, 22 through 58, is the financial management section.
Okay. Reconciliations, near and dear to all our hearts. So...
That clearly defines the responsibilities of the treasurer and accountant's office to reconcile.
Sure does.
Tensive.
Yep, okay, so we know what it is and the department should know what it is, so. Talks about the special reconciliation with the schools. I mean, it just, it wraps every department in here, you know, the general ledger, the timeframes and documentation. I mean, we know the way forward. We just, we got to get there.
The revenue turnover, actually, we have cleaned it out up significantly in that, you know, we use Zobrio presently for turnovers. But departments, I guess, Sharon, would you agree that departments are much better about turning over weekly? It, you know, was a little bit of an education, but departments understand why, again, the reason for doing it. It's...
Well, you...
It's the best practice. Comes down to best practices.
No, every department in this building and all of us at home, you know, you have to know what's coming in so that you know what's going out. I mean, you have to have the paperwork, you have to have the backup, you have to have the amounts. You know, it just keeps coming, you know, what comes in goes out, what goes out comes back in the other side. It's just all together, so I'm glad to hear that the department heads are getting the information to Sharon and the town accountant and whoever needs to get it in a timely fashion. And let's hope, or let's not hope, let's make sure that continues, okay? All right.
Yeah, I'd just like to add that, you know, by having these financial management team meetings, and we've been having them weekly for some time now, normally they were bi-weekly, but I think even weekly is a better practice to follow, weekly. I just, I think it's very helpful.
I would agree, while, you know, that's your thing with the department heads and the financial team, but I would, I would, I would follow up on that by saying, you know, we don't, we're not in a position where we can go two weeks or three weeks, whatever, without having the people in the same room having the same conversation about where we stand. I mean, we have got to stay on task.
Yes.
I know I'm preaching to the choir, but, you know, because any delays or misinterpretation, you know, so weekly gives you, gives everyone a chance to make sure they're, we're all moving in the right direction on the same, on the same wavelength.
But you're right, though, it's one thing to have those weekly meetings, but, you know, following through with the tasks.
Yeah.
Carrying them out is another.
Well, good, I'm glad they're right. I know it takes a lot of time, but I think the time it could potentially save for somebody not understanding something maybe or taking a different path because of a miscommunication, it just keeps everybody on the same wavelength.
I sent out, actually, just a little while ago, an update to the selectmen and finance committee regarding today's meeting. So, yeah, the treasurer and accountant are working pretty tightly. The accountant is finishing up finalizing December and January and the treasurer is already moving ahead, looking at pulling the documents for the following months. So I think we just need to keep that pace going.
That is for the unapplied revenue?
For the unapplied revenue, I'm sorry, I didn't, yeah.
That's okay.
Specific to unapplied revenue.
Has there been any update on the reconciliation for 2017? Other than July?
That's part of the unapplied revenue?
Yes, but from a, from a going, so yes, I understand the move forward with that, but as far as actually closing out another month, closing out...
Right, that's, the accountant is closing out December and January as of today.
But, right, but as of last week, we had only reconciled July. Is August reconciled? Are you saying that he's already gone from August through December?
Through November.
Have all been reconciled?
Yes, through November.
In a week? Wow, great.
There has been some funds moved to miscellaneous revenue, but he is through November.
Excellent.
That's great. Tailings is the next category in the...
Is that something you might be able to talk to, Sharon? I don't mean to put you on the spot, but some, not, everybody understands what that means.
I can read the explanation, okay.
I can reiterate, too, I don't know if it's as good as the paper is going to do it.
Well, it's basically the purpose, so it's tailing and then it says the purpose is to minimize the liability posed by uncashed checks and the associated negative impact on cash position certainty. This policy sets guidelines for the timely resolution of tailing, so.
The following through on the checks, so making sure that they go to the bank. You know, now that people are turning things over weekly, we're putting them, the same thing, we're following that same procedure we put in place for everyone else. It's not daily, it's several days, we're ringing everything to the bank so that, like this morning, we talked about a check that was stale dated because it didn't get brought in soon enough, it didn't go to the bank soon enough, so that, eliminate that so you don't have to go and chase the check back down. So I think that, you know, with all the things that we have, that one's not...
Yeah, no, it's good. Well, and it has the, it has the policy, which is exactly what you just said, and then it talks about procedures to also do a monthly review and a yearly review and... Good, okay. Any questions on that? Ed, any questions? Tax enforcement, provide guidance for equitably enforcing tax obligations and set the expectations for both the town and the taxpayers. So there's, there's a policy on how to go for final taxes and tax-taking and subsequent taxes and interest fees and license revocation and things like that.
That's a lengthy process.
Yeah, tax title payment agreements, foreclosures. Yeah, that's a, it's a big section. Did anybody have any particular questions on it?
No, I do. I'm not recalling your questions yet.
And then...
It's frustrating.
Tax recapitulation, or as we call it, the recap. So to ensure the town timely and appropriately charges taxes to property owners in support of the annual budget, the policy sets forth rules, responsibilities and deadlines and dates, so. Has the policies, the preparation for town meeting, recording legislative actions and the tax recap, when they're due, when the valuations of property are due, tax rate setting, et cetera. So again, they're all things that we've had that have just the language, any sort of statutes or laws that have, that have changed, have been added to this by the Department of Revenue. And this is their expectation, I mean, this, you know, you follow this book and these guidelines, we will be on the right path. And I think we're doing a lot of this, it's just we're not doing it exactly when we want to be doing it. You know, we're behind the eight ball still a little bit, so. Okay, and then the year-end closing, is that, that start a new thing? No, that's the end of this, okay, so. Closing out the books, basically. Review of grant balances, appropriation, special revenue accounts, year-end encumbrances, capital projects, year-end transfers, kind of what we'll be doing at the end of May as we get towards June to do the whole, the whole year-end closing, so. Did anybody have any changes or comments on that particular section?
No, just like I said, as long as the other departments have all had a chance to review, provide their input, then...
We should give them a quiz in about two weeks, right?
They do. They don't necessarily read it, but... The fire, I know the fire chief, I know the fire chief did.
So, Marlene, that's...
What's applicable to him, the department?
That section.
Much, I'd just like to say that, you know, much of this really is applicable to, well, the board of selectmen, town administrator, but your financial offices.
Right.
The treasurer, collector, assessors.
That's where the majority of this lies, yeah.
Right.
Just another way of tightening up on our financial...
Yeah, it's an excellent tool.
Issues and stuff, yes.
It is an excellent tool. Well, and if you follow, in this instance, if you follow what the state wants you to follow, then you know you're doing it...
You don't get in trouble.
Yeah, well, you don't get in trouble and you're following what they asked you for, following their guidelines and their recommendations, so you almost can't go wrong. Sharon, did you want to say something?
Well, my only thought is that, I know, Marlene, you reviewed this with Laura Lee. Now that it means the treasurer, we should probably make sure, she may have already done it with you, but did she go through this and make sure that there wasn't anything, you know, because she's got a lot of past experience about making sure that we didn't miss anything?
Right, right.
So, I'll make a note to ask her.
Okay, I'll be glad to follow up with her. I can't recall if...
There's been so much, they...
Yeah.
It's great, nighttime we're reading.
Yeah. Yeah.
I reviewed, but I won't do that. Set aside for that, for starters.
Absolutely.
Okay. Sharon, did you have anything else? Okay, thank you. Continued old business. We do have an agreement that we finally had, the town council review, which is to officially hire Bay State Municipal Accounting for the, to continue with the remainder of 2018 and the processes that they've, they've been assisting with. We didn't take action on this last week simply because the contract that had been presented to us, pardon me, hadn't been reviewed by town council. And we explained that to Justin Cole, the president of Bay State Municipal, and he totally understood. I mean, he said, "I wouldn't expect you would sign something without your town council reviewing it." So, I mean, so having said that, I see that we had a little bit of a delay only because our town council's been ill. But in any case, we, it was reviewed by the attorney filling in for Gary Brackett and there's been some changes to the original contract, which again, I don't think they changed much of the content. It was...
Wording.
It was wording and a lot of it is, I think, I think the contract encompassed whether you were a private business or a municipality, potentially, and since most of it is the same regardless, but some of it's different. So some of the things that apply to the private sector from a legal perspective don't really apply to a municipality and there was something about interest and different things like that.
Right.
So, but the intent wasn't changed from what I could see when I read it.
No, right, it, what you have in your packet is counsel's edited version, legal comments.
Yeah, which was, which was mostly deleting things, so that's good, but there was some additions here and there. Cindy, did you want to say something?
No, I was going to say it's a little less strict. I think the contract as proposed by Bay State was more strict, whereas the legal counsel, I think, wanted to make it a little easier on the town.
Right.
I think they were strict because of the situation we're in, so.
Right, and all depending on the services that the town needs. So that's really what it comes down to, is what, you know, the needs are and if we need support and guidance, then their Bay State is prepared to work with the town on that. If it's something that we don't need their services, their primary function is just to assist with catching up fiscal year 18. And so the, the original, the finalized is in duplicate in the signature folder. I had spoke with legal counsel and he responded to the redlined version that I received earlier today from Bay State Municipal Accounting Group and he was fine with those, with the redlined version.
So, Marlene, just a motion on the floor to sign the contract with Bay State Municipal. Make a motion to sign the contract with Bay State Municipal.
Yeah, second that.
Okay, I'll just, I'll just add, if you don't mind it, or, you know, as presented type thing, or recent version, you know, because we had a couple of different versions, so just redlined or, you know, whatever, should make it, if you're okay with that?
That's fine.
All right, so a motion's been made and seconded to accept the contract or to sign the contract. Is there any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, thank you. All right. Oh, I lost my agenda.
Which one do we sign?
They're in, they're in the signature folder.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, we're...
I just, I lost my agenda, is that it? That was the last thing of, okay, so is there any unanticipated new business? And so when is our next meeting?
We need to schedule that.
Because we have to let finance know, right?
Finance can know because they were talking about meeting next week.
It doesn't matter, actually, now that I think about it...
Are there any days that don't work for you?
Thursday doesn't really, but if it's the day that finance and Ed and Cindy can make it, I can...
Next Wednesday, planning board is meeting in here.
So it would have to be Tuesday or Thursday and, well, and that's fine, is Tuesday enough timed? Are we still waiting for some information to come? While are we still waiting for information to come back from? We had asked, just so the townspeople know, we had asked to have our budget in its form right now, which, which is still in flux as we go through it with the finance committee, but we were asking to have that reviewed by our consultant and/or our representative from Department of Revenue, who now is going to be out for a little bit of time due to some personal issues, so.
Why don't I follow up with Justin in the morning and see if he's had an opportunity to look at it and if he hasn't, how soon he thinks he could look at that.
Sure, so let me ask this, are you guys available either Tuesday or Thursday? So that would be the third or fifth?
Because of the importance of this, I'll make adjustments to my schedules because I...
That's kind of, that's kind of how I feel.
We got to get this done.
So can we send, not only ask about the review of the budget, would you mind just blasting out an email to the finance committee to see?
Date.
The, yeah, the date for the majority of them to be either Tuesday or Thursday, please? If you don't mind.
No, I was going to send an email out to them anyway.
And then, and then we'll know.
But that's good, we'll just narrow it down to Tuesday or Thursday.
Yeah, I know they're, they're down a person due to a vacation. I wasn't sure if there was a reason we had been hitting Thursdays recently for any particular reason, from a...
No, I think it was just this week, it was just, yeah.
All right. Cool, all right, so our next meeting will be either Tuesday or Thursday. We'll do it at 6:00 and we'll meet with them at 6:30, is that, I mean, there'd probably be stuff for us at 6:00. And then the meeting after that, why don't we ask Ed, the emergency management director or team and the fire chief to be present?
Okay.
Well, it's about that time, Ed.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much, thank you, John.